All right, let's get started. So first on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the ninth of January. That's good with the suggestions that I made. I made that change for two days last name, spelling. Anything else?
She's muted.
You're muted Carolyn, we can't hear you.
How's that?
Good.
I thought your suggestions and corrections very good, so I moved to approve if anybody else wants.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor? Alan?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Approve unanimously. Great, so just a quick select board meeting recap. I know I sent an email with sort of a summary, but Dan and I went in person and Carolyn was on Zoom and I think it went well.
Yeah.
They are good with us proceeding with the CPA application. We got a little bit of pushback from one of the board members. Some others didn't really say anything, but they thanked us for our work and said that we should continue with the, our committee until at least Spring Town meeting.
Did you, you presented the results of the survey?
Yep, yep, yep.
And they, they, and they did say we could make the request to CPA for the stabilization work?
Yes.
Did they actually vote on it?
They did not vote on it. Oh, well, they voted that we can proceed on CPA, yes.
They did make a vote. So, you know, let's continue.
Right.
Review.
Yeah.
All right, I'll take that as a yes.
Yeah.
I wanted to say something before. We were in the paper. Do you all get the, I don't know what it's called, the recorder now? Read, remember this? What?
Reminder.
That's it. Did you see it?
I did not.
Oh, it's a whole half page. And it's not, that was fine Courtney! It's not about this select board meeting, but the meeting before, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Yes, so if I were going out, I brought it.
Okay, I'll take a look and
Second time we've been in the paper about this.
Yeah.
Did they, did they speak in favor of the project? Were they neutral? Were they skeptical?
We're just reporting. I didn't read the whole thing, you know, it gets kind of boring. But it did show your picture Courtney, it had the three, the other three of us.
Oh yeah. Yep, I see.
I guess because you were sitting there running the meeting.
I didn't make the cut, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll send that around, I just pulled it up. Anything else about the?
On the select board? No, I thought the select board was excellent and discussing this. I mean, we did have, and it was a valid question about separating non Hadley residents versus Hadley. And then answers. I think you answered that very well Courtney.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, because the not, the non Had, it doesn't really matter if we're going for CPA money, what you know, that's not tax money or directly tax money.
At least for now, yeah.
Partly.
Yeah. Okay, so the main meat of this meeting is to finalize the CPA application, so
I think we should, if we haven't done this already, we should formally vote to request CPA funding.
Oh sure, yeah, we can do that.
We may have done this before, but
Yeah, let's do it just to be sure, yeah.
That's what we want, but now that we got the green light in the select board, we should actually
I didn't hear what you said Alan.
That we should vote, make sure that it's on record that we want to proceed with CPA.
Okay. So we're going to?
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we submit a application to the Community Preservation Committee for approval of CPA funds for stabilization of the building of Russell School building.
Great, second?
I'll second that.
Great, all in favor? Carolyn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Right?
Unanimous.
And I vote aye as well.
Aye.
Aye. Usually there's a little period for discussion after motion when it's approved.
Okay. Anyone want to discuss?
There, there's certainly a lot of items to discuss when it comes to, you know, the, the actual CPA application. We've, we've run up the numbers which, you know, for those activities certainly are going to be fairly accurate. It certainly is not the whole list of things that need to be done to stabilize the building, so we're going to have to recognize that, that we'll probably be back for more money. The amount of money requested from CPA doesn't meet the requirement for an OPM for the project. Always. I highly recommend that we, you know, you know, search for, you know, put out, have Carolyn draw up, you know, an RFP to, you know, see about OPM services even though it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily meet the requirements. We can certainly do like a CM at risk type situation and we will
I don't know what CFM is.
Construction Management at Risk. Rather than, rather than the owner's project manager, since it wouldn't be required for that amount of money. But, you know, I would highly recommend first that we certainly put on RFP for an OPM because we don't have anybody qualified enough to do it.
The first step is to get approval of the money, okay?
Right, correct.
If the CPC committee is at, asks us questions, how is this going to work and, you know, those kinds of things, then we can get into the details.
Right.
I mean, I think
Part of the soft costs that's worked in.
Right, the money, the numbers that we put out there mirror what DRA put on the table and those included soft costs for engineering architects, whatever, okay? I think if we get the money, then we need to have a conversation with the town as to, you know, procurement and and making sure that we have somebody other than, you know, you or Gary or somebody overseeing the work.
Right.
But I think that's a couple steps down the road.
Sure, sure. I'm just, you know, trying to put the, you know, thinking ahead, this is what we're, you know, if, if the CPA does
It's not just CPA as a town meeting.
Right, but if CPA votes in favor and the whole thing goes to town meeting, yes, that's, that's where we get into that.
I, I don't think we should mention that we're going to come back to the CPA.
We don't know.
Think we already did.
Say this is what we want right now and then maybe a couple years from now, if, if we, they see that we've done a good, you know, a good, good job to come back and get more.
I think my point is that, you know, the select board made a pretty quick decision. We gave a quick
Yeah, that was Jane.
A fairly brief presentation, you know, I don't think we spent more than 30 minutes.
Oh, not more than five, it seemed.
You know, it was pretty quick between the presentation and the, and the discussion and the vote. Basically, you know, the, the select board has given us enough rope to hang ourselves. So we have to make sure that we're going to go forward and follow all these things that we, you know, we have our eyes on the prize. You're absolutely right Carolyn, so we probably shouldn't mention that we're going to be back, but it's happened before.
We don't know, if we, let's say we get what we asked for, okay, all of it, and then we, we are the town, it's not going to be us. It'll be MBC, it'll be the town or the, we'll start you know, putting the package together and, and working out details and looking at bid documents and getting estimates. We don't know what, I mean, the best case would be, we can do this work for less than
Right, under budget.
And then we'll have money to play with.
Right.
The worst case would be, we only get, let's say we have whatever we asked for, a million people or something like that, is that the bids start coming in so high that it's obvious we can't do all of the elements.
Right, right.
We should have a plan in mind.
Right, it's either the bids come in too high or the OPM specs out work beyond the scope of what we need because of, you know,
Other, other considerations.
I mean, we certainly, you know, the, the numbers they have listed for the activities that we're requesting, you know, they have estimates for, you know, removal and disposal. But if this happens to be, well, we have to remove a certain amount that's asbestos contaminated, well, that adds a cost.
Oh boy, doesn't it?
It's always up with CBA's class.
Yeah, and I'm sure that's, that's what happened with the, you know, our, our old Goodwin, it sounds like, you know, I'm not, I don't know until our upcoming Municipal Buildings Committee meeting, but it sounds like we didn't ask for enough CPA money to get that project done, we're going to have to go back and ask.
Or do part of it.
Or do part of it, or somehow we're going to have to make a decision. Hopefully we can nail that.
That's all of that is possible, but we have to start those originally.
Right, I'm just putting the, you know, shedding a light on a bigger picture, right, I don't, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to say this is what we're going to have to do, this is what we're going to end up doing.
No, I think we, afterwards, when we find out really what, how much everything costs, we can readjust what we want to do, what we need to do.
Right, well, the thing is the OPM will probably get
But I have a question. Did the Goodwin go to CPA money? The library?
We did get CPA money.
We have almost $300,000 to do some things in Goodwin, as my understanding, we'll, we'll find out one.
Yeah, we've sort of converged Phase One and Phase Two and eliminated some of the Phase Two project stuff to fit everything into one phase.
Because that's historical, that's historical preservation money.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Costs in the CPA and if
It's already earmarked.
That's taken off.
It's already put aside. I think it's, it's instructive as to how this is all playing out in Goodwin. Now, they're not stabilizing the building, the building is stabilized already. They are upgrading the building.
Yeah, right.
Accessible, okay, and they're only doing the first floor, okay, and putting in a bathroom and some electrical
Yeah, some ceilings, electrical ceiling.
That's needed to do, so it's, it's not, you know, it's not, everything that used to be done over there, but it's something to make the building usable.
Sure.
And how that
I didn't realize this, I didn't realize this because we're in competition now with
Not in competition.
That money's already earmarked.
Well, I know, but, all right, it's been spent and so this is, this is a historical preservation project. And so there's only so much in the CPA for historical preservation. So we shall see.
Yeah, that's, that's the other, that's a good, good point that we should probably get into. We don't know what, how the CPC will you know, what they'll think about.
But I did know this before and that puts a little uh.
Let me, let me fix it. The, yeah, you should be worried because it's a lot of money we're asking for and we don't know, you know, and again, remember Mary Thayer gave us a presentation which we should revisit in our minds and maybe talk to her again. She gave us some numbers. The, the limit, there's two limits of what CPC can do. One is what they're willing to do. Because they may have the money and they might say, we don't think there's a good use of the funds, it's too much. There's a whole host of reasons why they could raise, why they're not comfortable with spending that amount of money on Russell, okay? And, and also bonding it, because that's the other thing, they would have to bond that money.
Yeah.
It's not like they have that money just readily available.
It's not, that business about bonding, I don't always understand because
It's not that
You can borrow. You don't have to bond, you can just borrow and it depends on what the, the rate is.
No.
I've been, I've been down that road.
Okay, but let me explain, this is CPC money that is with, they're bonding against the future revenues of the CPC, okay, they're borrowing against themselves.
That's right.
It's already, it's already going to be provided. It's not like the town's going out and borrowing money it doesn't have. It's borrowing
That's what you do when you borrow Alan, you don't have to Find out what they want to do, it's not up to us.
I'm saying is that there's a limit, whether it's borrowing or bonding or whatever it is, there's a limit the CPC has and it's based on a variety of factors, Mary Thayer explained it to us. But that's not our problem, that's not, it's their call.
That's right.
But there's a limit. I think she said they could theoretically bond, even though they've already bonded a million dollars for the play fields at Hopkins, they theoretically have enough to bond about the same amount. But what the implications of that as far as what they, what they wouldn't be able to do, how restrictive it makes.
Yeah, maybe we should talk to Mary again. Fortunately, the school is in a different category. And, and historical renovation, so that part's
There are three categories that money has to be spent on, okay?
I know that.
But in addition to that, there's other money that they can move from one bag to another, there's a general, I, I don't know what they call it, it's not the general funds, but there's, you know, there's money that has accrued over the years and they can use that, they can use money. For example, when I got the cemetery money, some of it was for historic preservation, but there wasn't enough in the historic preservation that year to fund that thing, so they pulled it from their, their, their catchall, their, their overall fund amount. I don't know what they call that, but it is a
A general fund.
I'd call it a general fund. So they, they do have the flexibility of, you know, if they allocated $300,000 for historic preservation, that doesn't mean that they can't do another historic preservation project out of the available funds, they just have to use the other money, not just the historic preservation money. But that, again, they, they know this stuff, Mary knows this stuff, we don't have to really know it, we just say, here's what we'd like, here's what we want, here's why we want it, and they will tell us, well, we agree that this is a legitimate use of CPC money, we believe, but there's a limit and here's what the limit is. And here's what the implications of a, of bond will pose. I'm sure they're going to have that conversation and we just have to, you know, we can't tell them what to do, they'll tell us what they can do.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ins and outs with CPA and, you know, that's their purview is to go through all the rules and make sure everything fits within the parameters and, you know, that's, that's up for them to decide and I'm sure they'll do their job as well as they've been doing it for all these years.
The, the, the one other thought I had on that, when we go before CPC or when you go before CPC, that if there's a feeling, a sentiment that it's too much money, that they, they're fine with spending some money on Russell, but not that much, then the question might be, can you prioritize this work? Is it, would you be, would we recommend that we do something other than nothing?
Yeah.
And that, we should decide that.
Certainly, I mean, when, when, I mean, the last, the last amount of money that was approved for use on the Russell School was the $8,000 for the roofs.
Yeah.
And when the, the bids finally came back, the contractors were saying, well, there's, you know, time's gone by, there's just more than $8,000 worth of work there. So another amount of time went by, COVID came through and the money was returned to CPA. I mean, obviously, just by those, you know, that happening, it's obvious that we need to spend some serious money on the building, it's not a
Yeah, the question, we're asking them for roof money, foundation money, pointing money.
Yes, so we should decide which, what, what, what projects we want to do first and
Again, you know, those are the items that we, we sort of picked out, but the
I know, but of those four items, which ones do we want first? Like the roof?
Yeah, do we need to know that or we apply or do we need to know about that now?
No, we not, we don't have to know that before we apply, because we're applying for everything.
Can we just finalize this today and we can work on that next time?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I didn't mean to bring up such, as, for discussion.
When's your next meeting?
We're thinking about, well, I was thinking February 6th.
Okay, no, you have to do it now because you have to submit this application, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
February 1st and then February 13th.
Yeah, we have to put the application in February 1st.
Okay.
There'll be a meeting
On the 13th.
13th, okay, so as long as before the 13th, we have a duck slide, okay?
Right. All right, so Dan put together, yes Carolyn?
The, what was shown at the select board didn't have the date of the first estimation, so of course that has to be fixed. You saw that on screen, right? The, the estimates of the, of the repairs or stabilization at two different times. And the first time, the first, first column didn't have a date. Jane and you fixed it, but it didn't show up on the screen, so we have to make sure for the application, we make sure that we have that original date.
Yes.
Okay. And that, and what we showed it to the select board is what the application is, right? Or not?
No, it's this.
Oh, yeah, oh yeah, I remember, okay.
So, Dan did a draft.
Alan did a draft and then I did a draft.
Oh, okay.
Because of the format, it was, I couldn't read it on my computer, so I've never seen it.
So should I just read it for everybody to look at or how do we, how do we want to handle this?
I mean, I'm fine with whatever Dan did, you know. Did you combine everything to one document?
Pretty much, showed the, the old prices, the updated prices, I put some information on there.
This is the one that you
Can you send that to me so I can see it on my computer?
Yeah, maybe I'll make it a PDF.
Yeah, it was, it was an IPub, whatever the heck that is.
Yeah, publisher.
Yeah, and when we sent, and we sent it into CPA, make sure it's a PDF.
Yeah.
Otherwise they won't be able to read it.
Okay.
So that's different than what the select board saw. Then, oh, Dan, you did the application, you filled in there, I, never mind.
I just, I just copied basically the format that, that Alan had forwarded to us on more, on more than one occasion. So I use that format, I'm not sure if that's
That's, that, you'll be fine with that format.
Okay.
CPC will, they'll be fine.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm sure they, you know, if they ask for supporting documents, that we can just show them all the supporting documents.
You don't even, you don't even, you're all online.
Yeah, I mean, they, they already have a ton of this information already.
The whole book of it.
Yeah, I mean
But we do have to submit some corresponding documents with the application, right? So it shows location in detail for the project or building, is the project on state registered historic places, blah, blah, blah. We already have the
You have a map of a site plan of the building, that would be nice for them.
Okay. Include pertinent information, including maps, photographs, diagrams, description of similar projects and endorsements, budget and funding sources.
Yep.
Do we have all that in one place?
The budget is what, is the, that's where the 1.2 million dollars are.
Yeah.
That's the budget and it's based on the updated figures from the DRA.
And I'd love to see, you know, show them some completed projects of CPA money, but boy, and that's how we there's this town hall columns, the Goodwin Memorial, the steeple at the church, there's so many things that CPA has given money to and they're, they're still not done and it's like
Yeah, I don't think we need to
Takes it away if you haven't finished it in two, two years.
Right, and I'm certainly here to, for, for the, you know, the duration of the project. If the, if the select board decides to cut us off at town meeting because the OPM has taken over, well, that's fine with me, but that's just me, I can forget it and walk away. I'm probably going to still attend any meetings that the OPM calls. They'll be calling him with whoever the contact person was, probably going to be Gary Berg because he's the one with the keys, he's the one who actually, you know, takes care of it.
What's OPM?
Owner's Project Manager required by the state for jobs over 1.5 million.
Okay.
Don't have that.
It's like a quote of the works.
Oh, I know that word. OP, CPM you said or OPM?
OPM, Owner's Project Manager.
So I will pull together the map, the photos.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, you don't need, they don't need a ton of detail on that stuff like that. And they, everybody knows what the
Hadley Historical The Historical Commission letter, that was a good letter.
Okay, great.
Yeah, any supporting, you know, we've got votes from Historic, we've got votes from Select Board. Anybody that we can get, you know, committees or, or commissions that we can get votes from.
So
You've got the survey vote.
The survey.
Right, sure.
Survey vote.
The source survey was done and 80% or whatever the heck it was.
I certainly would love to know Finance Committee's opinion on it. And, and is everybody on Finance?
Eventually this will go to Finance Committee, but not, they don't, they won't be, in fact, I don't even know if they recommend, I don't remember, did they recommend CPC?
CPA, I don't, I don't remember. The CPA has a Finance Committee person on it.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, that's
That's angry. Yeah.
Well, we'll find out when we go to the meeting, you know.
Yeah, I'll tell you
The other thing is the building, the building committee.
Yeah, oh, the Building Committee.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be a couple of days here.
Yeah, that's probably the most important one. In all of the projects that I've done with CPC, I've never had to go to the Finance Committee before town meeting. They never asked me to do that.
Right.
They'll weigh in, like everybody else.
Sure.
But we don't have to get their question.
Right.
It'd be nice if they did.
It's nice to know, I mean, you know, I, I, I'm sure they all took the survey. But, you know, it's nice to have the actual members of the, of the committee or commission to at least give, weigh in one way or the other, of the field.
I have a question about that survey. You know, as soon as it was put online, there were 300 people that responded. Who were they? I mean, how did 300 people know about that survey all, all, already at one, the very beginning? Were school, was it
Because people are angry, you know, even the people who want the building to come down are angry.
I don't know about that. I mean, it was like instantaneous, the first week, there were 300
Well, because we all shared with our networks.
The answer is we reached out to people we knew.
Oh, is that how?
That's how you usually do it. And then we advertised it around town as well.
Well, that was later, Alan. This was right away, there were 300 people and I thought, how did they know about this survey?
I think that's all of our networks.
Okay.
So how do we, for the Municipal Building Committee, is that something that you guys would vote on on Wednesday to approve it?
Yeah, certainly.
Does it make sense to get a letter?
It's on the agenda and we can certainly, you know, it'll be within their minutes how the, the committee voted on their support of the project.
So how do we relate that in the CPA application? Did we just say we have, you know, approval from the following committees?
Yeah, but, yeah, Select Board voted 5-0 in favor.
Okay.
This committee voted 5-0 in favor, or how many, we got four here now? Four zero? Five, okay.
Evan would vote, yes.
Yeah, and Historic voted unanimous as well, we just, you know, whatever we can do.
Well, the Building Committee, I wonder if you two should abstain since you're on this committee? How many are on the Building Committee?
It's hard to tell because the website is never, I mean, it hasn't been updated since April 2.
The members who have been going for the last two meetings that I've gone to, which is like, not many.
Right.
One or two from the last year.
Yeah.
Tim Nyheart, you, me, Gary, David Stavich, never goes to the meetings because of COVID.
Yeah.
And, and, and David Show, CEO.
Yeah.
So there, there are four other than you two?
No, there's more members, they just don't show up.
Oh.
I think, I think for this five active members.
Five in addition to you two?
Oh, Tim.
Three others.
So if you abst, I think maybe you should abstain if you have enough. Because of like you're
I, I don't agree with that at all.
Yeah, there's no conflict.
There's no conflict of interest. What's the conflict of interest? And then he's not, we don't have any financial, um, interest in.
Now, it's like you're stack, stacking the deck though, you know? We'll see how many show up.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll, they'll, you know, we'll have some people show up. Tim, I didn't, I didn't see any responses, but, uh, Tim sent the email out and we know that we'll be behind the gun.
David Phil will show up.
Yeah, and Dave Westervich might zoom in if the owl was there. I'm not sure. We'll see. I mean, it, you know, I really enjoyed his, his input. He's a really smart guy and good old Hadley guy.
My sense is from previous meetings with the NBC, when this has come up and we've talked about it, this has been a consensus that we should proceed with, with seeing if we can stabilize the building. There wasn't any, I mean, we never talked about like, we, you know, selling it or repurposing it or anything like that.
Yeah.
Stabilization, I think, has gotten more, at least, you know, in the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, it's obvious that we, you know, we, we don't have a use for it right now, but it's, it's also very obvious that it, you know, since it's in our historic, and what, what building is more historic than that one in the center of town?
Oh, yeah.
So it, it needs to, you know, at least have some attention paid to it and, uh, the town should have, so the townspeople should have the option to say something, so.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll take the next step on the application. I'll send it around for everybody to take a look at, um, in the next couple of days, um, and then we can send it up. Anything else about CPA?
Who's going to represent us at the, at the February thirteenth and whenever it is?
So the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Well, Courtney, you, you should, since you're our chair.
I think Dan.
I certainly will go. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's on my calendar. I certainly will go.
Yeah.
I will go too.
I'm only going to be in, in the state on the twenty-seventh.
Well, enjoy. Um. You've worked hard for this committee. I appreciate it. Enjoy yourself.
And, uh, on the thirteenth, um, uh, I, I have a, I, I do have a conflict. And the conflict is that I'm, I'm asking for money on behalf of the Historical Society for a project that I, that I, I'm the only one who has to explain it, okay? I think it would be awkward for me to be explaining two projects, two separate.
Good for you, yeah. Hey, Historical Society, should they, they support this thing too?
I'm sure they do. They would, except that we, we meet even less frequently than they, the building committee.
Um, I should also mention that the Historical Commission is going to apply for funding.
For the sign?
For the sign, the walking tour and the audio tour.
Yeah, what, how much money do you talk about?
Ten thousand.
Yeah, see, I'm asking for eighteen thousand.
Okay.
But that's peanuts compared to what.
Yeah.
You know.
We just decided today because we were going to do fundraising and we realized that we couldn't do fundraising legally, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, one thing about CPC, they, they, they are anxious to have projects brought before them, okay? Um, of course, what we're asking for and what the school asked for was, you know, different, you know, a different kind of animal, big, much, a big, bigger ass. But generally speaking, they want to, you know, put this money to good use.
Yeah, I mean, I've read, uh, a bunch of the information and mission statement of the CPA and, you know, it, it's amazing that they haven't themselves come up with projects because, I mean, when the, when the whole, uh, CPA idea was floated around Massachusetts and they started to adopt this in town after town, that was what they expected is for the CPA committee itself to start to, you know, focus in and, and pinpoint projects that they wanted to do. And I have seen none of that.
Yeah, I never knew that. I, I never knew that. When I joined the.
But it, it does work. It, it's worked well.
It's worked well for our town. We've definitely, you know.
I think it's good for the CPC to be more like the neutral.
Right.
Uh, arbiter of whether it passes justice or not, as opposed to being the advocates and the judge jury kind of thing.
Right. I mean, the thing is, even if they put, uh, you know, an article on town meeting floor, it's up to the town. So it's, it behooves them to, to come up with the different ideas that they want.
Has the town ever, have, ever rejected in Hadley, the CPA, uh, warrant article?
They, which one did they reject? Uh, it was from a private individual.
I think they rejected one for Porter Phelps one time.
Oh.
Was it the tobacco bar?
Could be a tobacco.
Tobacco bar got, got withdrawn.
Oh, withdrawn, okay.
Yeah, because any, any.
Oh, I remember one. It was, um, what's the name of that reservoir in, in North Hadley, the lake?
Uh, Miller, oh, yeah. Lake Warren.
Yeah, uh, right. So there was, there's a path going down there and this guy wanted to have a little sidewalk along there. Um.
People could certainly apply. It, it.
Yeah.
It's for, you know, a lot of different things, so.
A, a bridge or something like that over part of the lake. It was.
This taxpayer's money and the state has, has come up with the idea, this is how the taxpayers can.
I know, in, in Amherst, nothing ever was rejected. I was curious about Hadley though.
The CPC committee, not so much the town meeting, but this committee is pretty strict about making sure that, that the projects are eligible, they, they meet the criteria of eligibility for historic preservation, um, uh, open space and, uh, second one.
Housing. Housing, yeah.
But, uh, so they, so some projects will, you know, are, are, you'd think they'd be historic preservation, but they say, no, it's not preservation. It's, you know, something else.
Courtney, I have to ask you, um, there was a wa- walking tour of Hadley before.
Uh huh.
Yeah, is this going to be updated or what?
It's updated. So I pulled historical photos of each house and updated, uh, took current pictures of the house and com- put comparisons. And then I interviewed several people in the community to add information in there. So it's going to be a lot longer.
Yeah, nice. Very nice.
Yeah, I, I helped with that a little bit and.
Yes, that's how we met, I think.
And, uh, yeah, she did a great job.
Thank you.
A lot of hours on that.
Yes, still going. All right. So moving on, um, so that I just wanted to touch upon the MPPF application, um, still on hold at least for now until after CPA. Um, but I did check in with Ross, um, from MPPF and he said a study, this is exactly what he said. A study made within the past five years should be fine. If you know there has been a major change in the conditions since the report was written, you should probably get an update.
Well, good. I'm glad. I must have talked to somebody else who said no.
So.
Hopefully we can change the conditions over there.
One, one thing, one thing we could mention to CPC is that if we get this money, we can, we can use the CPA funding as a match for other funding.
Yes, exactly.
Correct.
And there may be other things out there as well.
And that's why they were a little, um, hesitant because our town meeting, uh, is late.
But this, if we get this money.
In a way, it would be better to have the, um, that grant be next year instead of this year.
Right. And, and this project, if it goes forward, if any of this work goes forward, it's going to take months to get things to a point where, you know, you're actually doing bid documents and things of that sort. And so we have time before anything actually happens up there.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't done anything since two weeks ago and when you all said, forget it. So.
We can all turn to on that, but you know, if we get the money from CPC.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, because this application is so much more difficult than the CPA application, much, much more difficult. And I don't, I think it's impossible to get it done in like two months. I really do.
I don't think we have to worry about that. We'll move to next year.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so ground lease feedback from the listener. Did I want everyone got a chance to read through those? I know Dan did.
I did, but Courtney, I don't understand. Uh, what was your initial question on this listserv?
Um, so I asked, um, uh, I went through the cost to rehab, which is prohibitive to the town. I said, in order to save the structure, we're considering the feasibility of selling it to a private.
Well, why? Why did you ask that question? Why didn't you ask, um?
Because we're coming up with op- options for all of the options that were listed in the survey. We want to make sure that we have as much information on all of those for the select board, for the community.
Why didn't you ask all of them then? All of the questions that have this, except selling.
Because I was asking about the ground lease. I wasn't asking.
There's not a lot of information about everything else except.
Alan, I'm asking Courtney, what I, what did you say?
Because we were asking specifically about the ground lease and the person who Alan connected me with, um, has expertise in that and she recommended that I contact the people on this listserv about the ground lease.
To see if anybody had any experience with it.
Yes.
And the answer was no.
Yeah, but the question of, of selling it, um, the building or leasing the building, um.
We're collecting all the information for all the options.
We're not recommending, we're not recommending it. We just want to understand.
Well, I, I hear that. I hear that, but it seemed to me all the options should have been left, put forward and then maybe we would have.
One, no, no. There's one particular question that we don't, nobody seems to have an answer for, and that is, how do you protect the towns if you did sell it?
Yeah.
Are there ways to protect the towns' interest in the land? Because that's one of the things that we keep hearing. Whenever we raise the issue about the, the possibility of selling the building, no, you can't sell it. We shouldn't. And the survey supports this. Don't want to sell it. The land's too important.
Yeah.
Okay, which I don't disagree with.
There are hundred year leases that I.
Exactly. Yes, that's, that's, that's one thing. That's one option, but there's also, um, a, we think, and this is what we were trying to tease out to no avail, was, did anybody have any exam, uh, examples where it wasn't a lease, it was a sale, okay? But the sale documents had, or the, even the preservation restriction.
Yeah.
Had proviso that if.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a catastrophic loss of building.
Yeah.
That the insurance didn't cover, could you have language in there that reversed the land back to the town?
Right.
Uh, and I mean, in theory, you know, not being a lawyer, that should be possible. So we wanted to find out, did anybody ever, ever actually do it? Did they, did they have a situation where they sold the building, uh, but they had provisos or to use, to use the general term, ground lease? Um, where you, where you sell the building, but you own the land? Or some variation of, of that.
Right.
And nobody in the, who answered the question addressed that directly. So apparently nobody's done it, at least in the.
Not, yeah, not in the recent past. I mean, it, I mean, here in town, you had the situation where the, the Goodwood Memorial Library was owned by the trustees.
Yeah.
But the land itself was owned by the town, so.
The other way around.
Okay.
The, the land, the deed for the land was given to the trustees.
Okay.
The town built the building.
Okay, so, but when the, when the town took over.
They knew it for a hundred years.
Right, nobody knew it for a hundred years. But when the town took over.
Yeah.
And built this new library and wanted to use that building.
Right.
Then the trustees had to sign the deed over back to the town.
Yes, I guess that is an example.
But it's, it's.
But it wasn't on purpose.
And it's certainly not recent.
No.
So say that again, uh, the town owned the land and the, the trustees built the building?
The other way around, Carolyn. The trustees of the, of the library were, were deeded the land.
Oh, they loved the land? Who owned the land?
They were deeded the land.
I'm sorry.
Trustees owned the land, okay?
Okay, got it. Okay.
And the town built the building.
Okay.
The trustees managed it, of course. They, they, they operated it and managed it. But, um, and we, nobody, and I was, I was a trustee for six years. Nobody knew that, that there was a deed that the trustees held. We thought the town owned the land.
Okay, thanks.
You say good night. Anyway, that, that, I mean, it was, it was just, it was a shot in the dark to see if it, we could shed any light on something, but it's so, I mean, the survey clearly indicated people don't want to sell.
Well, yeah. Well, I think that it would be interesting to know, um, how many, how many, um, towns fully, well, I guess I can get that from the MPPF, never mind, because they have all kinds of examples of, um, them funding projects in town that fully renovated, uh, different buildings. So never mind, I can get that information from that, from the state.
So one comment that I thought was interesting from the lister was from Ward Hamilton from, uh, Old John Hawk.
Oh, he's on, I didn't see his.
He did. Oh, you know what? He may have, yeah, no, it wasn't there. Did you see it?
I missed that.
I think I did, but I just.
Okay.
He essentially said whoever quoted the $16 million may have deliberately made.
I'm sorry, was that?
Whoever, he said that whoever quoted the $16 million in 2019 may have deliberately made it, uh, made the cost prohibitive.
Yeah, well, and in fact, that, I think that's, that is the fact, but we have no way to, you know, you know, these are professionals that the town paid and then, you know, we can't accuse the town of hired, hiring somebody to come up with the biggest quote. The DRA came up with the closest quote and that was 22 million.
Oh, no, no, they never came up with the 22 million. It was totally, here.
Well, it's not alone, it's other, it's other, there's a, yeah.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, the, the updated numbers is the 20, you're, you're correct.
The numbers, it's more like nine or 12 million dollars.
Right, correct.
And then it, it was inflation makes it higher, but then the 20 million, I know, we still don't know that.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, that's might be, might be seismic upgrades or something.
Yeah, certainly to bring it up to seismic code would be.
What about that business about mothballing buildings? That the first person talked about?
And it's basically.
Isn't that stabilizing?
That, that mothballing and stabilization basically the same thing.
I know, what she said was, um, to put dehumidifiers in the basement.
Oh, that, that, yeah.
And, and, um, what else did she say for upstairs? Um, some sort of keeping the heat on maybe or something like that?
Yeah, that's not necessarily, I mean, that's a good idea. It's not necessarily essential to a building like.
Oh, the Susan Lou email, yeah.
Well, does this, does, um, the Russell School have any heating system at all?
It has a mini split, but I think it's only for one room.
Yeah, and nothing that's active.
Yeah, no, there's nothing you can turn on.
That's, that's electrical, yeah. And there's no water in the building?
I don't think so. I think, uh, Gary had poured, uh, uh, antifreeze in all the toilets and whatnot. Doesn't look like.
And drained the water.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's pipes, but they're not, they're all drained.
Yeah, I think he's drained it back.
Yeah, you don't need water.
Well, when she said mothballing, um, I think it was to keep the level of humidity stable and it was the very first person in this, and talked about this, their school building that was near their town hall and near the business district and all that stuff.
Anything else about that?
Well, mothballing, nobody wants to do it. Do we need to do it?
Do we need to stabilize?
No, mothballing.
You, you, Carolyn, you're saying you're equating mothballing with dehumidifying, but this person was talking about mothballing is a much broader term and essentially means stabilize the building.
No, it didn't. It, well, I mean, sta- her, their version of stabilization was to keep.
Dehumidifying was one.
Keep the humidity level.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah.
And also doing something that, um, it wouldn't leak, the roof wouldn't leak or something. You don't, you guys don't remember that? It was the very first person on the listserv.
Well, we do. I think we're, um.
You're trying to prevent water intrusion.
Yeah.
That's one, that's stabilization. That's why a roof is important. And, uh, you know, the joints in the foundation are important. Um, uh, we have talked about, you know, the windows.
Yeah.
And doing something with the windows, uh, uh, and that may, that may be the kind of thing that back on, but that's not as big a deal as some of these other things that we're looking for. Uh, but to keep the, uh, keep water from getting into the, to, to the, uh, you know, with cracked wind glass or the frames or other frames, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on.
All right. So town warrant submission. So I confirmed with the town that town meeting is May fourth, which is the first Thursday of the month. Um, so it's my understanding that we don't have to write a town warrant, right? We basically just have to.
They will, yeah.
You see, we're like the warrant.
Okay, perfect. Great. Um, and then next steps for that was, um, I will post on social media the date of the town meeting and remind folks that this will likely be on.
I'd wait till we have.
Okay.
I'd wait till we get past CPC.
Okay, okay, great. Um, and then I'll do the same with the Russell School, um. Uh, survey respondents. Anything else?
Well, putting putting dehumidifiers in the basement is not very expensive. And that's what this person was recommending.
What would be really great is if we got this money, we could hire somebody like Mohawk.
You know, I'm hoping that that we put out some RFPs for OPMs and that, you know, they come back. We find an OPM who's willing to work with old Mohawk and then old Mohawk actually does the bids.
Yeah.
You know, submits bids for the.
And and also takes another look at the work that needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, um. If, you know, again, we're we're not required to use an OPM if it's less than one point five million. So if old Mohawk comes in and says, yeah, it will be construction, it'll be, you know, construction management at risk. And we can do the whole job for you. If if there's, there's a little more risk involved, but if you, I mean, if uh.
There's no, there's nobody, I don't think there's anybody that has a follow-up agency that Mohawk does. And they know the building.
Satisfied with most CM at risk. Uh, quality of the project designs and budget estimates have been improved. By pre-construction services, value of engineering, construction ability reviews, phasing reviews. Um, there was something in here that said. Um, owners have opted more to assume more financial risk during the course of the project. With relatively no contingencies. Um. Contributing factor to the harmonious working relationships that most owners have enjoyed with CM at risk firms. It's just a little less. Formal.
Yeah, but it but it's more uh, than what we're doing with Goodwood.
To the extent public owners are able to capture these benefits with, while also minimizing those risks. Can be controlled, the public interest will be well served. There's uh, you know, this is part of a whole study that I read on on. That type of procurement. Um, and it makes, it makes sense for like a project. That there's, there's not necessarily. A definitive goal line because we could put a bunch of money into preserving the building and the town could still opt to sell it. So it's it's where we think where we get our money's worth and the building stands.
Right.
And somebody still gets use of it.
Yeah.
And we've, you know, the CPA was used for the proper. Uh, I I a hundred percent believe that the town will get the best use out of the building, but we have to afford the options.
Yeah, keep the option open, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, one thing on the CPC application, I don't know if the union has it. I don't know why you had, I didn't, the contact person, okay? They want two contact persons?
Yeah.
I can't remember what I put down, if if anything, but we need to put. One person, you, probably from this group, or somebody from the town, and traditionally it's been the town, it was great.
Right, well, you had, the original application, you had written my name and Carolyn Brennan.
Yeah.
But uh, after our conver- conversation with select board, it was Carolyn and Jane.
Oh, yeah.
It was town administrator and a select person.
Fine.
They they suggested that, well, geez, you know, if anybody's gonna be in charge of our buildings around here, it's gonna be our maintenance guy, Gary. And so I added him to the, to to that, knowing that he's on MBC as well.
Yeah, of course, when they ask contact persons, but there's people they can talk to. The CPC can talk to if they have questions about the project.
Right.
So I think you've got to add that as well.
I.
Can we do three? Can we just put three?
You can add as many as you want.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly would add Gary. Would not leave him out of the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, it, at this point, he does so much, I I don't wanna put, I don't put more on his plate.
Right, right.
And if I can field questions for him or field options, that's great, but he really needs to be.
I think the thing is. Um, there's 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 the, there's the business of getting through CPC and town meeting, okay? Gary's not gonna, he's not a.
Right, that, yeah, that's like I said.
Down the road, once if this get money gets approved and the town actually is doing what. At Russell, what they're doing at Goodwin, then Gary's an important player.
That same happened with here at the library and the senior center and the North Hadley fire station. Gary was pretty much the point person.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, he's, he has the knowledge and expertise to. And he knows how to talk to construction.
True the town.
Same license I do, we just, you know, to, you know how to talk about the the parameters of the project with some.
Does he, does he know that his name is on the on the application?
Well, the other day, he didn't seem to give a crap. I think he started thinking to himself, thank God I don't have to deal with it. Thanks for doing.
Well, we'll talk to him again.
Yeah, we'll talk to him again.
Well, he'll be at your building committee meeting, won't he?
Yeah, yes.
So.
Okay. Great, so next meeting, February sixth, Monday, five thirty, here. And Zoom, does that work?
Yeah, I think it's on the calendar already.
You don't. All right, um, I think I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.